Welcome everyone to the Central Park United Neighbors September Meeting. Um, my name is Liz Stalniger. I'm Board President and I just have, I just wanna do a quick welcome and kinda take care of a little bit of business before we get to the main event. First of all, for those who have not joined us before, um, Central Park United Neighbors is the registered neighborhood organization for the Central Park community. Our mission is to provide a forum for the residents living in Central Park to discuss and resolve issues, to provide a network of communication for neighbors, um, and it means acting on matters of importance to the community as a whole. We promote public service, civic discourse, and collective efficacy. Um, and we're committed to providing welcoming environment for all in Central Park. We're a full volunteer board of Central Park residents and a 501(c)(3). Um, and so this is actually the third Tuesday of every month, starting at 6:30, um, is our monthly meeting and everyone, um, is welcome to join us. We will be meeting here, um, in person at the Cube and also online via Zoom. Um, I know we have a bunch of folks joining us tonight also on Zoom. Um, and so our agenda tonight is a little bit different from our regular monthly meeting. Um, we will have the Denver Public Schools at Large Candidate Forum, making up the majority of it. Um, it will end at 7:15, um, where there'll be time to speak with the candidates, take a little bit of a break. Um, and then for those of us who are on the CPUN Board, we actually will have a truncated 30-minute meeting from 7:30 to 8:00 p.m. for the Board. Um, we have a couple of items to, uh, to vote on. Um, but without further ado, uh, I will move us along to the candidate forum. Uh, we have, um, uh, an election coming on November 7th. Um, ballots will be getting in your mailboxes the week of October 16th. Um, so we wanted to make sure there was an opportunity for folks to know a little bit about the people who will be appearing on the ballots. So, um, we don't have a Denver Public Schools district race, uh, this year, but we do have the race for at-large candidates. Um, so before I continue, I just wanna thank, uh, a few people, um, and then I'll introduce the candidates. Um, first of all, thank you to the MCA, uh, and the Cube, particularly Lawrence in the back there, uh, who's the manager for the Cube and really, you know, did all of the setup and the online setup. It has been incredibly helpful. Uh, so we really appreciate the use of the space and just how, uh, easy the partnership, uh, is with the Cube. Um, also Brian Weber with the Foundation for Sustainable Urban Communities, um, in the back, provided the drinks and, uh, some of the refreshments for tonight, um, and has also just been, um, a supporter of many of our efforts in Central Park United Neighbors. Um, and then also kind of blocking, uh, some of the CPUN Education Committee headed up by Amanda Alshouse and Carol Hunter and numerous other folks who helped, uh, volunteer tonight. Um, you know, without all of the work you've put into this and with the questions and kind of organizing this event, you wouldn't have it. So I really appreciate all of the work that you've put into this, uh, and putting this on. Also, um, our timekeepers are my kids. Um, so Stella and Jean Stalniger in the fronts, um, and I'll be assisting them. Um, so I just, uh, wanna welcome now, we have, um, Kwame Spearman, um, John Youngquist, um, and Paul Ballinger are on the stage. Um, there's a fourth candidate, Brittany Johnson, um, who, uh, is ill and not able to join in person tonight, but did provide some information that Carol will be sharing out as part of the introductions for the candidates. Uh, so I will let you take it away, um, and hand over the mic.
Can you hear me without the mic? Oh, I need to be, sorry. Um, just before we get started with the questions, uh, we're gonna introduce the candidates and you had a brief introduction to the timekeepers and I really appreciate their efforts because we couldn't do this without them. Um, and I also want you to know that if your questions that were submitted online or in person or to one of us, uh, don't get answered, all the candidates will have a list of the questions, the concerns, the thoughts, the ideas that you have. So please be assured that your concerns will be addressed. We'll get, we'll get that to them by the end of the week. Um, so if any made, if you didn't fill out a question on a card, um, chances are it's not gonna get answered tonight, but they will know what's in your head, what's on your mind. Um, and then I also wanted to tell you that there will be time for you to mingle with the candidates afterwards. We'll take a little break before our board meeting, but there's plenty of space out there in the hallway and and chat with them. So the candidates are, and Kwame, I'm gonna start with you and you can just fill us in about, I had asked the candidates how they wanted to be addressed and they all said their first name, so that's cool. Uh, so Kwame, tell us about your current professional endeavors and your education, your background. Lawrence is here and he will
Sorry, Lawrence.
And just what is your current professional?
Oh, that's your professional career.
There you go.
I would refer to this. So I'm a native, uh, graduate of St. Louis. Um, from there, I went to Columbia University, the city of York. Um, after that, I got very interested in politics and I ended up being a school. Um, and I ultimately, um, finished my educational career at the Harvard Business School. I'm a graduate of the U of A, so I'm a student there. So, we will want to be
It seems like it's going in the right direction somewhat. Uh, but I think we need to be much more innovative and much more pragmatic on how to solve the problem. Uh, I believe there's several things that I'd like to see as a board member. Uh, one is replicating success. We have, we have schools in the district that are doing very well. And some that aren't. So we've got to take a look at schools that are doing good. And seeing what they uh, seeing what they're doing right and replicate that with a shadow type. Uh, concept that works for most organizations, I think it could work here. Uh, one of the other things that I want to really do is look at creating and building innovation centers in our district, much like Cherry Creek High School. Which, oh, excuse me, that's, I'm sorry. One minute. We'll get done.
We have to give more support to teachers. When I grew up, you couldn't be a teacher and live in Denver, Colorado. In fact, the majority of our teachers did. Now that's not the case. So we've got to provide more compensation for our teachers. I think we've got to innovate. We should be providing housing for our teachers. Denver Public Schools is the second largest landowner, city and county in Denver. We should use their vacant spare land to build housing for educators. We all have to give our educators more benefits. Do you know if you're a teacher right now, you don't have a credibility with? You know how crazy that is? We need to evolve that for our teaching board because if we have supportive teachers, they will support our students. The second thing which we have to talk about tonight is the achievement gap. It's appalling. The difference between white students or our Latino students has hit a point in which we can't look away. And the board needs to start moving as well.
I'm gonna talk about three. Um, and it relates to teachers and students, but I'll focus primarily on students. The first is safety, that every student feels it is safe in their school every single day. Uh, the second relates to mental health, that every student has the force that they need to be right at school in their life every day. And the third is teaching learning. Uh, and that third point that I represented uh, in terms of safety is a great um, challenge to me because I don't understand why the work hasn't been done over time. Uh, it's an issue that I have given up for the good uh, and shared with our superintendent. Really the work that can be done and needs to be done and it's not an issue that we only work for them. They don't get given half of the working understanding of how GPD works within DPS. And that is appalling to me. The commitment that was made, there was a health, the second area of mental health, we didn't really play with it. We didn't understand how it is that we're providing services for our students and it's not been updated in the last twenty years. Significant work for us to do.
Across the district, enrollment is declining in Denver Public Schools. However, in northeast Denver, enrollment continues to grow. So what do you attribute declining enrollment and how would you address it while simultaneously managing growth?
Thank you. Uh, no, there are at least two or three different spaces that that relates to um, declining enrollment. One of them is really great. That was a challenge in the Denver Public Schools when I was there and we needed to be responsive to that. Um, it's somewhat in the Denver Public Schools right now. Um, one relates to the cost of housing for families in Denver and that's something that we need to be responsive to. Small, growing partnership uh, with ours, city government and our community um, as well. And then the third right now, because of the level of confidence that parents and families have in the Denver Public Schools. And that's the one that I want to talk about most, right? There is an interest that relates to safety. And we have, we watch the numbers. I've talked with principals and with personnel. Since last year, we've seen numbers go down in response to safety concerns that parents have. And they're not all going back to the Denver Public Schools, right? The majority is seeing in our schools, eating the district private schools. And we need to regain confidence from our parents and our families and who we are and what we're not. That is the key thing.
In this district, enrollment is declining in Denver Public Schools. However, in northeast Denver, enrollment continues to grow. So what do you attribute declining enrollment and how would you attribute it while simultaneously managing growth? One minute.
Right. So, so I am the problem with declining growth. I'm thirty-nine. I plan to have kids. I don't yet. I moved into a neighborhood, into a house that probably had a family of four before me. That's going to keep happening. And so when I say that we need innovation, we've got to think about what to do with our schools that are declining enrollment. I don't think we should be, we should be closing schools because those schools are going to be in traditionally black Latino neighborhoods. I think we need to start using our schools for things like wraparound services. Have community members in our schools. Imagine if we had our senior citizens who are dealing with isolation in our elementary schools, helping mentor, tutor our kids. That's the direction that we need to go in from the perspective of the district. Here in Central Park, we need to keep growing and we need to leverage the fact that you all have good schools. The one thing I will continuously ask you is, do you like your teachers? Do you like your schools? And so while some people may say it's all the women do, it's not. We need to use what is working here and expand upon it so others can have access to it.
Thank you. Uh, I think safety is a very important piece. I know personally, I live here in Northfield and um, uh, friends and friends in Park Hill. And I know personally, people leaving the district looking at Adams Twelve, Aurora, um, and other neighboring districts and then private schools. Private schools are full and have waiting lists. So people are freaked out. Last year really did a number on everyone. Um, I think that we absolutely have to look at housing. I agree with Kwame said there. If we can't retain teachers and hire the best teachers possible in this country, then we're gonna lose people. I also think that we do need to innovate. We do need to look forward. Uh, we live in Denver. We live in Colorado. We have some amazing universities here. We need to pull them to the children here in DPS. We have amazing companies moving there, software companies, stack companies. We have to partner with them. They're gonna come here and benefit from uh, our city. Our, our residents here need to benefit from those companies coming here. We need to make sure our children are being educated so they can have jobs at those companies. Thank you.
Okay, the order for the next question is Paul, John, and Kwame. The superintendent is the sole employee of the Board of Education. What criteria would you use in evaluating his job performance? Or versus you? The switch.
Um, there is a framework that's in place now. I don't think it's really been adhered to to this point. I know there's a review coming out, I believe it's October, uh, for the superintendent and grading him on how he's doing. So we'd be very interested to see uh, how that, how that looks. Uh, obviously, safety, we're, we're, we're hitting on that a lot today, but I think that's a very important one. Uh, so I definitely want to create a framework for safety, uh, make sure it's effective. Uh, and that also needs to come from teacher and parents of those who are over students. Uh, academic outcomes, obviously, I got thirty seconds. Um, um, sorry, it's all good. Um, academic outcomes and as we talked about was closing the uh, the education gap between BIPOC children and white children. Uh, and yeah, and then safety and I think also teacher and student retention. Uh, we need to create metrics for that because it's a problem. Every child we lose, we lose money in our district. We're gonna have to close schools at some point. So we want to avoid that at all costs. All right, got it. Thank you.
Point two, one, go.
Okay. Today, an annual report came out from the Denver Public Schools. I don't know if anyone else had a chance to look at it, but I certainly did. And, and what we saw was essentially no growth, right? We saw some negative growth in some places, maybe a ninety-seven point four in one or two. But it's a very general recognition of what isn't happening at the Denver Public Schools. And I think there is the potential. I know that I'm optimistic that we can grow. But what I'm not seeing in that kind of report or in expectations for our superintendent yet relate to one of the outcomes that we need. Especially when we're talking about teaching and learning and we're talking about the learning of our students. Um, like I mentioned, I work at elementary, Walter Elementary School. And I am there with teachers that are working hard and supporting their students. And they're so smart at the work that is being done. But they're not feeling a connection and support from the school district right now in ways that are gonna help them advance their effort forward. Thank you.
We need a vision for the district. You know, I was in high school when we launched the Denver Plan. And we said, we are going to be a, a national leader of innovation. We're gonna have a family of schools. We're gonna have diverse learning environments. We're gonna have choice. You as parents are going to get to select the right educational environments for your kids. That was the plan. Everyone was aligned. We were, we had metrics to see if we were moving towards that plan. And I can be honest with you, a lot of that plan worked. The problem I have right now is what is the plan? Ask yourself, what is the plan? The first thing the board has to do is force the superintendent to have a vision that we can get behind as a community. And then secondly, we have to hold the superintendent accountable for that. And lastly, the board shouldn't be the show, right? And unfortunately, the board is the show right now. Our entire time should be supporting whomever is running our school district to accomplish the vision in front of us. Because that's what's gonna help our students and teachers.
How quickly you effectively communicate with the community on a routine basis? What works currently and how effective do you believe the public comment segment is of the board meetings?
I'm gonna be all throughout the meeting. Uh, I believe representation matters. And I think it is very easy to come to Central Park and neighborhoods like this, talk to you all. I grew up with you all. And every single part of this city deserves representation and I will do that. Secondly is how I'll work with my members is treating them with the respect that they need. The reality is, is we are only going to achieve or disrupt our district as if we are united. And, and we need someone who has the courage, the confidence, and the desire to be a collective leader for the group. I think they started in there, but um, that's actually it. Okay, I'll get my time back.
I will do what I've done in every community that I've worked with over the course of my career. There is words to come and to send and to listen, and to listen closely. Um, as an elementary principal moving in, it's listening to children, into parents, into teachers and other community members. As a high school principal, it is similar, but a little bit more broad. As a chief academic officer, it was making certain that we had really unbiased and relaxing and intentional listening sessions of all of our teachers. And what we do when we listen so closely is we begin to build trust. When people see responses to what has been said in ways that's meaningful to them and in their community and in meaningful to them in regard to the work that's being done with their children. I have already begun over the course of the last two months, having copies and conversations in every corner of the city. I've worked in every corner of the city and I'm committed to being present with my colleagues in every corner of the city, investing time, listening to understand before we take action.
All right, thank you. So uh, this is a great example of what I'd like to see. I love community. It's one of my core tenants for my campaign. Uh, community engagement meetings, like John said, we've been all over the place, uh, you know, as candidates. And then individually, I've met with lots of different people. Um, and anyone that asks me to come see them, speak, or, or just have a conversation or a coffee, I have done so. Uh, so I've definitely tried to make that a priority. Uh, I also believe in, 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 um, in public comment. I think that um, I've been in public comment a lot, especially this year, uh, here in the DPD School Board. And I think it's critical that the school board really does listen to people. I believe in representative democracy. Not many politicians out there believe in that anymore in this country, unfortunately. But I'm a firm believer in that even with my own beliefs or thoughts, it doesn't necessarily represent the community. I think it's critical that we have a community that also thinks that the five district uh, directors need to get more involved with their communities and represent opt with the board members at large.
That's specifically why you will or will not support innovation schools? If you support innovation schools, what will you do to protect and empower them? And we'll start with Paul, then Kwame, and then John.
Uh, I do support innovation schools. My daughter went to an innovation school last year. She and the other students there, I believe, got a great education and the, the numbers reflect that. Um, so I do think that um, it's important to maintain and keep our innovation schools. Uh, I think that the district definitely needs to do a better job. Uh, as John alluded to earlier, uh, district leadership and guidance has been spotty at best, uh, the last few years at least. And so I've, I've spoke to uh, teachers and leaders at several innovation schools, including McCollum. And a lot of times they're just left out and win, uh, waiting for guidance, waiting for support. So I think it's important that we maintain and keep our innovation schools. And I think the diversity in our school district i- is one of the most appealing things. We just need to have a board and a superintendent and district leadership that understands how to make it work. Uh, where we don't hit people against each other, but also learn from each other and work collaboratively. So I'd like to see more collaboration between the different types of schools we have in the district. Thank you.
I think we're, it was a lot of what Paul said. Uh, I think there's nothing strong or, or, sort of, in the back that you might be able to choose the right educational environment for your child. And I think we need to continue to grow on that. One of the waves that we all set declining enrollment is that we have more and more choice. We started bringing in students from out of district. Talon is a really good example of that. They are bringing in students from outside of Denver Public Schools, now they're enrollment. And I think innovation schools accomplish that. I went to Smiley. I'm not gonna speak ill of my alma mater, but it is not performing the way that McCollum is performing. And we need to recognize that. If something is working, we need to do it. And let's just talk about the elephant in the room. You should not have fired current Dennis. Myself. Room, within seventy-two hours after his termination, planned a rally, I hope many of you attended. That's the type of leadership and defense that we need of schools that are real. If innovation schools are in that category, let's continue to.
Good one.
Got it. Thank you for the question. I um, have been around the school, the, the school district in, in the work of schools and in moments when innovation schools are being developed. I've been in a school, a large school, and then from a moment thought about becoming an innovation school. And that was because schools need flexibility in an area that's where it is meaningful to their students and teachers and to their community. Um, right now, we are lacking a vision for this district currently too. How it is that our communities of schools work together? And there are schools that feel disrespected, not appreciated, because they're seeing a board of education that without rationale seems to be making decisions about their existence and about levels of support. And that is primarily innovation schools uh, that I'm talking about. When I am looking at the interests that innovation schools have, like other schools, I'm interested in, what is the challenge that you're solving for? How are you moving forward? That needs to be the question for every type of school that we have. I'm supportive of innovation. I think we need to gain clarity around what that means and how it is that people have confidence in their school.
Can you explain why you do or do not support SROs? Uh, what is your assessment of the discipline matrix and its effectiveness? And what are the best strategies to achieve, to achieve a culture of safety?
I wanted to add ninety seconds to this one, okay, right? Well, let's, let's be flexible. Let's make it, you can do two minutes if you want. Is that okay? You bet.
I asked, why you do or do not support SROs? What is your assessment of the discipline matrix and its effectiveness? And what are the best strategies to achieve a culture of safety?
Um, so I'm in support of SROs. I've worked with SROs over time. And, and when we have had the right SROs, we have been able to be community partners in ways that provides services in deep and important ways, right? Um, it was three years ago when the school board decided to take SROs away. And I was one of seventeen principals that wrote a letter to the board that said, please don't, because you don't have a plan. And none of us were thinking, we need SROs every day and every moment. But we were thinking and understanding that without that strategy and that resource, if it's taken away without another plan in terms of how to support all of our students, especially our black students who were and continue to be affected in certain levels by the presence of SROs, without that plan in place, then we're not serving our community as we need to. So my support of SROs is, relies upon this um, at the moment. It relates to our reality that we don't have another way to prevent safety for our students in our school. We were promised resources three years ago by the school district that they did not provide, right? Their response over the course of years was to replace SROs with no further resources, no further strategy. And um, a discipline matrix that is not helpful or supportive of students or school communities, in my belief, right? I believe that we could at some point have a community of schools that, that may not require SROs, but the work investment it'll take to get there is tremendous and immense. It's gonna take years to make that happen. It'll take the kinds of investments that the board had begun to promise and has failed to provide. Um, the discipline matrix that we have right now is a matrix that was not developed with the input of principals or school of this level. It was not implemented with a level of training that helps people understand how to make it valuable within a community. And at this moment in time, we need to make certain that we're coming back and creating agreements with GPD and DPS and other safety partners in creating understandings that the school sites of what a real school quarter and behavior support is about.
Okay. Paul, wait, I'll check.
Got it, yeah, I got you.
Three, two, one.
Hold on, we're good, sorry. Okay, um, great questions. So SROs, yes, I do support SROs, especially in the largest district in the state of Colorado. Uh, it's no secret, the last few years, we've had pretty bad crime here. We have gang problems. We've had tremendous amounts of guns in schools and, and that's just not okay. I do support SROs to the point uh, or mission of safety in regards to weapons in the school. I don't want them out giving tickets for cigarettes and things like that. Otherwise, obviously, I'd probably be in trouble. So uh, so I do support SROs. Uh, like John said, there has to be a good plan when they brought them back after the summer. There really was no plan. They didn't even have a contract with DPD. They just expected them to show up. So that's just poor planning. Um, as far as the discipline matrix, I've not spoke to an educator in DPS or a parent or a student that thinks the discipline matrix is good at all. I've not met one yet. Uh, if anyone here thinks it's good, I'd love to, to hear your input. Uh, so it needs to be revised. There's been several floating around out there that I think are great. Uh, Parents' Safety Advocacy Group has proposed one that I think is great based on, I believe, Littleton uh, School District. So that's an easy fix, but they're not gonna fix that until, based on their words, twenty-twenty-four, which is unacceptable. If we fall into the same trap we did last year with some of the events that happened, you know, uh, I, I don't know who's gonna own that, whether it's the superintendent of the board, but it needs to get fixed. Uh, culture of safety, how do we achieve that? And we achieve that by electing school board members that take safety and security seriously at our schools, that value the lives of our children, that value the lives of our educators and our community. Right now, uh, that's just simply not happening. Uh, good strategic planning and identifying where we want to take the school district. I agree that SROs uh, should be a capability the superintendent has. Uh, long term, there's a lot of things that can be done to mitigate it to where we may not eat SROs at some point, but we've got a long way to go there. I agree with Paul on that. Thank you.
And many of what is this issue is the reason why I'm running. Because we are not that far off on these issues and yet it feels like we are miles away. And the reason why I say that we need new leadership is some, someone has got to bring us together. No one in the world thinks that our schools should be unsafe, right? The problem is that when we had SROs, we saw tickets and a pipeline increasing for black and Latino students. And there was zero leadership, either at our schools or on the board, that addressed it, right? So yes, we need SROs. Of course, we've got to keep everyone safe. But we've also got to understand that there was a certain demographic that wasn't working under that. And we've got to have a unit that can bring people together under that. Similarly, with the discipline matrix. Of course, we cannot have people who are shooting people outside of school in our classrooms. That's absolutely insane. I don't believe anyone wants that. The problem is we were expelling people at a disproportionate rate who happened to be black and Latino. Until we can slow these complex conversations, it's going to feel like we are miles apart. And the reason why I'm running is I want to dive in, of want to have these conversations with you. Because two things can be true at the exact same time. And I fundamentally believe that if we work together on this issue, we'll get to the right outcome. We have to aspire to have a gun-free school district. We have to do it. I was a freshman when Columbine happened, going on DPS is all a statewide thing. But we started this mess. We have to aspire to end it. And it's by having leaders that can bring us together on the ideas that we universally agree with and dive into very difficult conversations to move us forward, put together a plan that we can all live in grace.
Fifty seconds on this one. A recent, oh, a recent report showed persistent and increasing segregation in Denver Public Schools and that students in schools segregated by race and poverty also had lower achievement. How do you think that the district should respond to this reality? Paul, John, and Kwame.
Um, I think that uh, one of the things that, issue is, is definitely there's inequities we've seen in DPS. Uh, I think that choice is a great thing. We've talked about that. One of the reasons that we, we want to be in DPS, we want to succeed. I think we have to make sure that it's working for everybody in DPS. Uh, for some folks, the choice is not effective. Uh, people don't have the resources, the means, or the ability to get their children to the school that they want. I think there's gotta be a practical solution. I think one idea uh, to, for that is to maybe break it down into zones within the district. So if you live here in Northfield, you can choice into this many schools. Maybe it's break it down into quarters or something like that. Uh, and in addition, uh, the school district has to provide resources as far as pissing and things like that to make sure that we have equities or reduced inequities, excuse me. Um, we saw recently uh, a, uh, the Latin Education Commission recently did a uh, um, investigation and a report showing that basically if you are a person of color, if you are below a certain threshold financially, and if you live in a certain part of town, you're not gonna get the education outcomes that, than other people will have. Uh, so we have to take a deeper dive in that. Again, looking at replication and then making sure that our schools are diverse. The most diverse schools in DPS typically are the most successful. So we have to identify ways to mitigate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I was a student uh, at a bussed-in school, Virginia High School. And it was a beautifully diverse experience and it was a challenge for lots of kids that were in our building together. But over the course of time, we've remained friends and connected in ways that are really key and important. I don't know that that's the solution. I was a principal during busing and when busing ended in nineteen ninety-five uh, at Newland Elementary School in West Denver. And that was a completely segregated school before busing, during the school, uh, during busing and remains so today. Uh, the complexity of this problem is one that requires us to come together as a community and to have conversations. We live in a segregated city. You know that school choice hasn't solved for us to have integrated schools, although there are some. I was the principal of a relatively integrated school at East High School that used choice to draw in and prioritize students of color, students on free lunch as well, to come into our school. But it has not solved beyond that space. We need to have the conversations of how it is that we have white communities, black communities, um, Latinx communities, indigenous communities, that aren't sitting next together, next, next to each other and having difficult conversations about who are we and who do we want to become as a city? It's gonna take that broad representation, coming together and listening deeply, and getting this solved together.
So let's start with what is, is good news. Um, if you look at CMAS scores, I'm not putting everything on CMAS. But if you were a white student in the district and you just disaggregate that against white students across the state, this is the second highest performing school district in the entire state. We are only behind Steamboat Springs. I attribute a lot of that to choice and having educational environments in which students can thrive. And that's great. The problem is there's like a forty-three percent gap between our white students and our Latino and black students. I, I was in that environment at East. Let's be honest, it exists. It has existed. It continues to exist. What we've got to do is maintain our successes, our, the successes that we are observing, particularly for our white students, and understand why they are occurring and target and put a lot of resources to get our Latino and black students moving up as well. You know, if you think about choice, if you have access, it You know, if you think about choice, if you have access, if you have transportation, you can get your kid to the right school for them, then you use it. If you don't, well, you probably don't. Unfortunately, for our black and Latino parents, the number one decision-making factor for them when deciding a school is proximity. So we gotta figure out a transportation infrastructure. We've also gotta figure out how we spread knowledge and where parents understand the type of school environments that are available for them. And if we do that and start that process, I think we can start lifting up our black and Latino students as well.
All right. Now you get to ask a question. You each have the opportunity to ask one of your fellow candidates a question. So let's start with, uh, John and then Kwame and then Paul. And we aren't gonna be too rich, and I think you would be dead in about ninety seconds. Both of you speaking. So John, who would you like to ask a question and what question should be?
I will ask a question to Kwame.
And then he's gonna answer.
I was gonna answer.
Kwame, over the time in conversations, you represented the importance of neighborhood schools and the challenge of neighborhood schools compared to, um, segregation. And in neighborhood schools, there's a solution. Um, you've also represented, um, the challenge and the opportunity with, um, the joint schools and innovation in charter schools, um, as an opportunity to, uh, integrate the schools. Um, which is it or, or how are you solving current constraints that we have? Where is the problem? Where is the solution?
And to, to clarify that they have a problem with segregation or, or schools that are, that are.
The problem with the interest in, in integrated schools. Thank you.
Okay, so listen, uh, I think choice is probably the biggest factor outside of neighborhoods that leads to segregation. I just look around. If you live in Whittier, which is where I live, and you don't think Columbine Elementary is a good enough school, and you've got the means to get your kids to Robwell or here to Central Park, you're probably gonna do it. And so what we've gotta do is we've gotta have great schools in every neighborhood. The way that we do that is we have diverse schools in every neighborhood. You will not find someone who's more in favor of an educational curriculum diversity than I am. We've gotta have way more pathways for our students because that is how they will love to love, love to learn how to learn. I don't know if that makes sense, but I'm out of two minutes. But all for neighborhood schools. So I, but, like, I, I think safety is one of the biggest issues. Paul, I very much respect your safety plan. And you go into more detail, because I endorse most of it as to what you would do to improve safety in the neighborhood schools.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so one of the things I'd like to see, uh, is I, I wanna see minimums for every single school in DPS. Every single school is different, but I think that there are some basic things that concern me. One is obviously your mass shooter type stuff that we see nationally. That's not gonna, that's not gonna go away anytime soon. So we need to protect our buildings with, uh, proper doors, vestibule doors, and, uh, I believe ballistic film on all the first floor, uh, windows and doors. So that way, if someone's coming in, uh, you're buying time and space, which is critical for safety and security. Time and space for your people to get time to, to find cover, uh, and, and create space between the person doing what they shouldn't be doing and the people in the school. And that way it gives time for police to respond. Uh, I think that we need to probably bolster, or I definitely would wanna take a look at our climate, um, excuse me, our climate and safety department here. Uh, there was a big void in leadership there last year. I wanna make sure that that's properly funded and properly led and that they have a good strategic vision. Uh, the, the better that gets, the less of a need we're gonna need for SROs, the less of a need we're gonna have for SROs. Uh, some of those are critical things. Also believe training. I've talked to teachers that got about thirty minutes of training on safety at some schools. Um, and I've talked to people out of the districts that got one or two, three days of safety training. So I think training, uh, minimum standards on buildings and properly funding and leading our climate and safety department. Okay, uh, I'll ask John. Uh, John, um, you've been very involved with the district for a very long time in lots of different areas, as you highlighted, which, uh, we all appreciate. Uh, do you believe that the district has the tools, current minus leadership and good strategic vision? Do you believe that has the tools needed right now to be successful if it has the right leadership at the district level and then the, uh, school board level?
I do believe that this district has the tools to be successful. And I don't think it will take long to turn a corner because I believe in the teachers that are in the classroom and in the principals that are leading our schools. I am worried that they're not here for long. If they're not working for an organization that they trust and they believe is supportive of them on every level. And I know, because I, I talk with them daily, that principals question the level of support that they have in the work that they do for our students and for our parents and for our teachers and for our community. That worries me most. And I do know that when teachers do not feel supported, when teachers do not feel like they have the resources to be successful, they don't last long either. I believe that with the right board leadership and with the right district leadership, we can turn quickly toward a community by listening to each other, understanding each other, and deciding on the right actions to take with each other that, that we can lead to the right kind of relationships, the right kind of work together, and the right kind of success for every student across the city.
Finally, we have one minute for each of you to speak. Your comments will be our. Oh, okay. Two minutes. Um, we have a question. Mark, what do you wanna leave this audience with? And Paul, why don't you start? And then John and then Kwame.
I don't know what to talk about.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so first, thank you all for being here. It means a lot. I think it's really important that, uh, the community gets educated on voting. Uh, I think that, uh, the last few years, uh, I don't know, I'm just not, I'm not seeing a lot of leadership in the board in the district. I think we've all talked about that tonight. And so, uh, I think it's really important. I think this election is very important for our children. Um, I personally, uh, I'm excited to vote this fall, uh, because I just think it's time for our district to, uh, to get where it needs to go. And I think that over the next couple of elections, we've got some important work to do as, as community members and parents. Uh, I believe very strongly in safety. I hate to talk about it so much. I wish I wasn't having to talk about it so much. Um, I wish that I wasn't even compelled to run, to be quite honest with you. Uh, but my child, your child, uh, our teachers, uh, they deserve to work and, and, and learn in a safe environment. We talked about all these other things like teacher retention, student retention, uh, education gaps. And I believe that safety is a very important part of it. Uh, I also believe that we do need to take care of teachers. We do need to look at some of the issues facing our community uh, as far as, um, not just in educational gaps and disproportionate, um, numbers there, but also with financial. Uh, living in Denver is really hard. It's very expensive. Uh, it's very hard to, uh, to move here. If you're a twenty-two-year-old college kid coming out with your education degree, trying to move here, buy a six, seven hundred thousand dollar house, you got two, three hundred thousand dollars to do that, it's almost impossible. So we really have to look at solutions to, uh, to recruit teachers. And we have to make sure that our children are learning in a way that is innovative, uh, to where they are prepared for the future. Because a lot of the jobs that exist now won't be here ten years from now. They won't be here five years from now. They certainly won't be here twelve years from now. So we have to look at creating a district that not only is solving the needs that we need now, but looking into the future. So thank you very much.
I am and have been completely devoted to the Denver Public Schools over the course of my career. There's no doubt that I care most about every child in this community being successful um, in the experience they have with their teachers and with their principals in their schools. I believe that if we behave more as communities and listening to each other and drawing conversations together, creating goals and engaging in the right kinds of strategies and actions that allow us to see growth over the course of time for our young people, that we are going to be able to celebrate. One of the things we're not feeling enough in our district right now is joy. And the joy of working in a classroom, I felt this morning in the first grade at Hala, the joy of, you know, experiencing a school together that is moving and is exciting is something that maybe some of you have felt, and I'm hoping that you do even to this day. My experience in four different districts and across this entire community is not a limiting factor. It's what our district needs right now to be able to understand where we've been, where we are right now, and how we can innovate into the future. We've had to innovate over the last few years, right? We had to innovate over the course of the strike a number of years ago where we're supporting teachers absolutely as a community and marching more and more confidently as a result. Challenging times of importance. Recreating a school during the pandemic required an incredible amount of innovation for us to come together and listen to teachers, listen to students and, and parents, and engage the kinds of actions that it took for us to begin to be confident together, more confident over time, and now working in schools that are connecting together as they should be. My understanding, my, my experience, my ability to know that where we've been, what we can do can lead us forward and more in the long years is gonna be key to the success of our district over the next six months, three, four, five years. Thank you.
So, and, and, and running for this seat and interacting with the board, um, I gotta be super honest, there is one school board member that is creating so much of the havoc that we are talking about right now. Unfortunately, that school board member is not going to be on the school board. Now, for a list of people, you've got some work to do. But once you remove them and maybe one person who supports them, just don't believe that missing the school board and talking about how bad the schools are and how we're wrong is the right answer. The community has spoken. He will not be around anymore. Now, you need to do the difficult thing. The difficult work is understanding that we have an achievement gap. We've had it. And if you're claiming that you can fix it on your education experience as your background, that's not a good answer. Every other industry and organization is forced to evolve coming out of the pandemic. We collectively have to think about how we do that together as a community. We need visionary. We need hope. We need strategic leadership. I'm running. That's what we should be talking about. Because when we talk about what inspires us, we quickly realize we are all united. The Denver Public Hospital is this magical place where it didn't matter who I was talking to or on what topic. There were three things we knew. We loved the Broncos, we loved the mountains, and we respected the intent of the other person who was saying. We have to get back to that. I don't wanna undermine, I don't wanna lessen this race because it's an opportunity to say as loud and as clearly as we can. We are not gonna let divisive forces ruin our city or schools. We are gonna come together and look forward to your votes to do that. Okay, your signs in the back, they will look brilliant in your yard. I appreciate the optics and taxes, all my. The first fact is property values.
And I wanna reiterate that, um, the candidates, including, um, Ms. Johnson, who's not able to be here tonight, will perceive your concerns and your ideas and your questions, even though they were not asked tonight or not, not asked in front of this group. Um, and I thank you very, very much for coming. Um, given me a lot to talk about, think about. Um, and I have my vote. Today's National Voter Registration Day, by the way. Um, so I hope you're all registered to vote. And finally, thank you, gentlemen. It's, this is not easy. I've been involved in campaigns for school initiatives and, uh, and I thank you very much for your energy and your thoughtfulness and for your presence here tonight. So, thank you.